All right, I will call the meeting, meeting to order if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to defy in the United States of America, to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, just as a note, executive session was held prior to tonight's meeting for real estate and personnel matters. And before we get to citizens to be heard, Commissioner Evans, do we have a, uh, opening comments for our folks here?
There's always something here off the top of my head. Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us. It's really great to see these wonderful people here in the building, as well as people who tuning in there. It's back to school week. So I, I always feel like this little stretch here, we're running into the last few months of the year, but it's like having a semester. This is our semester to get some great things done. Hopefully with all of your help, we will.
Oh, that was it?
And peace and love.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Next, citizens to be heard for agenda items. Do we have anybody here in the township building? I do not see any hands raised at the moment. Anyone in Zoom? Moving right along, resolutions. Don, do you want to take this?
Of course. Thank you, Commissioners. We do have one resolution this evening. You have to thank Denise has spent a great deal of time going through some of the old records from the township under, uh, the open records requirements and then move to follow PHMC Pennsylvania Store Museum Commission guidelines for how long items need to be maintained, uh, for, uh, within the township. Those are physical copies. Now, everything that's on the list, it has been doc starred. But the physical copies do take up quite a bit of space after a period of time. And so periodically it is good to go through and dispose. So the, the list, the resolution allows for the township to dispose of those records which have exceeded uh, the PHMC requirements associated with disposition of records.
Commissioner, there's any questions on this?
No.
We're in residents here in the township building. Any questions? Disposing of old documents. I saw the boxes and boxes of them in the back room there a couple of weeks back. So that's a lot to go through. Uh, any comments from Zoom? At this time, entertain a motion to approve the dis- disposition of township records.
So moved.
Moved? Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Don, what do you got next?
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. I have a couple of items to discuss this evening. Uh, the first is a matter that was brought up at the work session earlier in the month. It's that time of, uh, year. This would be, uh, essentially a motion to advertise the, uh, trash contract, trash recycling, which does expire at the end of this year. Mr. Gill has put together and worked with Kristen Camp Solicitor on the, uh, the contract, the updated RFP. Uh, it would be a three-year contract with, uh, additional two-year optional years. Uh, no level of service is being altered under the terms of this contract. Uh, this, if the, the board would allow, we would be advertising the contract, um, advertising the RFP, uh, to see what sort of bids would be received.
And, um, when was the advertisement planned to be, uh, scheduled?
The next week. Uh, we return on Tuesday, uh, the holiday. And there were, we have to advertise it twice. No more than forty-five bids, no less than ten in two consecutive weeks. Uh, so it would be sending it to the Daily Local News, which is our local newspaper of choice, uh, for two separate weeks, um, in September, uh, with a bid opening towards the, in, uh, early October.
Hey Commissioners, any comments, questions on this?
We discussed this when, a little bit when Scott was taking it out last meeting. Hopefully we get some good.
Scott will lead you in the right direction. All right, uh, township residents here in the township, any questions? Everything will stay the same. Anyone in Zoom? None at this time. All right, entertain a motion to authorize staff to put out the bid for the twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
So moved. Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Wish us luck.
Fingers crossed.
All right. All right, a little update there for Chester County Intermediate Unit?
For this, yes, uh, Chief would be so willing and.
Chief, love the uniform, looking sharp tonight.
Thank you. So as the Commissioners are aware, for the past few months, I've been talking about the drastic escalation in incidents at the CCIU. And we've seen this coming for a number of years. Um, and despite our best efforts to speak with their administrators years ago to reduce or at least mitigate, um, the number of, of responses to their facilities, the contrary has happened. We've, we're up two hundred plus percent. Last school year, we were north of four hundred, four hundred thirteen incidents, to be exact. Probably more significant than the number or the types of incidents that we're responding to because they're not always contained within the buildings themselves. They're spilling out into the community and they're creating a greater public safety risk and sometimes threat. This is not a traditional school environment. Many of these students suffer from severe behavioral, mental health and developmental issues. We've already been there eleven times this week. This is the first week of school. I'm sorry?
They just opened.
Yeah.
Been there eleven times?
Yeah, and we still have one more day to go this week. Two of the eleven incidents resulted in disruptions, uh, to traffic again on, on Lincoln Highway.
Oh, jeez.
Those students were cited for disorderly conduct. One of the two had been cited last school year. I mean, they, unfortunately, they just don't care. Um, you know, we had an incident this week with a student who refused to get on a bus and then the parent refused to come and pick them up. So it, it's just a myriad of, of incidents from assaults to potentially instruments that could be construed as weapons, to possible drug offenses, to, um, texting nude images, to child line complaints of potential sexual assault or abuse of students. It, it just, it's overwhelming our police department and, um, these elopements have impacted businesses. I mentioned traffic on Lincoln Highway. Last school year, we had to shut down train service. Township manager, Director Stackhouse and I have met with CCIU administrators multiple times during the past several months. While we believe in a spirit of partnership and cooperation, the impact on public safety and township resources, police, fire and EMS is not sustainable and it's beginning to cripple our ability to respond to other incidents in the township. Under, uh, the manager's signature, a letter was sent to the CCIU Executive Director, Dr. George Viori, addressing our collective concerns. The CCIU has hired a consultant to conduct an assessment based in part on the concerns that we've expressed, which include violence within the facilities and elopements that create a public safety risk. The, uh, we're told the consultant's report is due to be released as early as the end of this week, the end of this month. And it's expected to contain recommendations on how the CCIU can mitigate the dramatic surge in incidents and limit the associated public safety risks. I've met with their consultant several times in the last several weeks and we provided data to assist them in their assessment. When that report is released and we have an opportunity to review it, we'll apprise you of what those recommendations are and the potential impact on, on our, our services.
Have they promised to release that report?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Is, I don't know, is that a public document? Are they going to release it to us?
I think the manager may be able to speak better on, on that. I think we have a, um, an understanding with the CCIU since we've cooperated with their assessment that obviously whatever the findings are and whatever the, the recommendations are going to be to mitigate them, it's certainly some of that is going to rely, you know, there's going to be some reliance on the township. Don, if you want to add?
Of course. Thank, thank you, Chief, for that. The assessment has been a significant, uh, issue. The, uh, to answer your, your question, Commissioner Young, uh, my understanding, speaking with Chester County Intermediate Unit Administration is this would be, uh, discussed at the, uh, the board events that occur in the third Wednesday, uh, each month. So I believe the next one's coming up shortly. Uh, I'm not quite sure what, how, how it will be delivered at that. If the full report will be released at the board meeting, uh, we will receive, uh, an advanced copy to comment on or if just an executive summary will be provided to the board members, uh, but a decree, if not the entirety of that report, will, is expected to be made public.
Question. So how do we handle the Coatesville School District with their reports and incidents and the impact that they have on our police department? What was it?
So.
How do we handle the school district?
When I, when I first started here back in twenty thirteen, they, they had four police officers and they were, they had a very limited reliance in our department. Over the years, as their numbers waned, our numbers went up. To the point, a couple of years ago, you recall the incident we had with, um, you know, false reporting of threats.
Right.
They had one, one officer at the time. Our, our calls went through. Since then, they've hired two or three additional officers and I think last school year, we had twenty-some total calls there, only ten of them actually during the school day. So the majority of them were after hours alarms, you know, door left open. Really minimal type things. Um, so it, it's, at least for Coatesville School District, it's definitely had an impact when they hired, built their police department back up.
I was just wondering, because that might be a recommendation to CCI, what is it, CCIU? To take a model after the Coastal School District, you know? Because if they're doing it, they certainly can. I mean, because they have so many resources, I don't see why they couldn't.
Can the IU hire police officers?
They could, they can.
As their own or the FBI?
So there's, there's a couple of different ways. Um, you know, the school resource officer program, are officers provided from the, you know, the municipality with jurisdiction. Coatesville School District's police officers are hired under the, this School Police Act. They receive their authority actually from the president judge of the county, uh, as far as what they can or can't enforce. But they wear uniforms, their, their arm, they, they look like police officers. The only thing I would say, the enrollment at the CCIU, the type of student is very different in most cases than the type of student we're talking about at the high school and intermediate school.
While we're in this limbo, and thank you for all you've been doing to try to maintain some sort of order over there. You know, I, and while we're in this limbo waiting for the report and then the months after that that will take to come to some sort of plan to move forward, uh, would it be possible to request for the Coats, for Coatesville, uh, High School to reallocate two of their police officers to the CCIU on a full-time basis?
I think that idea has been floated.
I'm sure.
More than once, um, and I, I, I don't see that happening. We've, we've suggested it. I can see it happen.
I know you're doing everything you can and Don is. It's just, this is, they're like smacking us in the face. This, you know, it's like, well, we're not going to do anything to fix our, help fix our own problem. You just keep using all of your resources over here and that bothers me. I want that school to be, I want our schools to be better. I want our public schools to do well, but.
Well, they call for everything.
What's that?
They call for everything, including things that aren't necessarily yeah, police matters. And I, when I say not police matters, I'm talking about like violations of whatever their school rules or school code. Because they know when they dial nine-one-one, we gotta go.
Yeah.
Right? So we're
All day long.
Like when you take a look at four hundred and thirteen incidents spread out over a hundred and fifty school days, and again, it's not just the response, and sometimes that's what they see. They see an officer showing up Yeah. and spending ten or fifteen minutes there and then leaving. What they don't take into account are the reports that need to be done. If it involves a use of force, there's got to be a use of force investigation.
Yeah.
These child line complaints, they're, they're criminal investigations. They take a lot of time. So ten minutes could actually mean a half a shift for an officer, depending on the, on the, on the nature of the incident.
And it's interesting because a lot of the students that are attending there, they're not all from Coatesville School District. I mean, these kids are coming from all over the county. So maybe every district and outside county, so maybe every jurisdiction where these kids are coming, they need to get some kind of coalition going on for the students that they're sending into that program. You know, let the, let the district where these kids are coming from take some responsibility. They're sending them out here, you know?
Stupid question, who funds that school, CCIU?
So it's, uh, they ever see funding from a number of, of sources, the PD, Pennsylvania Department of Education, uh, which the county provides some funding. Uh, so it is, it's, it's, uh, it's a little more complex because it's a, uh, it spans obviously a number of school districts to provide that administrative and, uh, supplemental support for specific programs, including what's occurring, the Coatesville Campus. Um, so it is a, a variety of funding off of sources.
And they're not under the auspices of the Coatesville CAS?
Coatesville has a member on the board, but they, uh, they do provide service to the entire county and in this case, the entire region.
It's the, you can't, you know, how to eat an elephant thinking here, but you know, you were talking about the texting of pornography. I mean, school districts all over this country are banning cell phones in schools now. I was at a, uh, Coatesville School Board meeting where there's a full presentation on that particular program. That was two years ago when we were there with Florida. And they just said, well, we'll pass on this. I mean, you gotta start getting the little things going. Not you, you're doing everything, but I mean, that's all right.
It's a whole new world.
I, I think one of our concerns here is our resources are being used at the CCIU unit. But, uh, and not for our residents in our township.
And you know, every, every meeting, um, I talk about, and growth is great. Like we love growth. The, 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 the future of the township and the time I've been here has never looked better, right? But the more you grow, the busier you get. And it's not just me who talks about it. When I say even without CCIU incidents, we're up anywhere between thirteen and seventeen percent in other calls for service compared to the same period a year ago. Chief Taylor talks about it during his report. When Mink was presents, they, they talk about calls being up. You just, you expect that. So trying to absorb that on top of this, at some point, it just becomes unsustainable and almost unmanageable.
It's, it's a shame we can't just send them a bill where the hours are that our officers are putting into this.
Mark, I tried that. I tried that back, back in the day when I met with them to the point where we literally, and that was, that was the first year or two after, you know, it went from Cat Brandywine to the Learning Center and their enrollment went up. We had it down to the penny what it, what it cost our department then.
Yeah.
Based on like a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty incidents. And I asked them, I said, look, we, like, we're going to come, but we need your help. If, if you want our services, like, we need your help. And they, they had no interest, no interest in, you know, reimbursing us for, for any of that.
Because they know if they pick up the phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that's what they said. Well, we're in Callan Township and you have a police department, so when we need you, we're going to call and
They call for anything, I can see.
We're going to go.
They, the teachers are afraid of the students.
Even things that may not seem like it may be a police incident when they, like, it's not always the same when you get there.
Yeah.
So that's like, my people don't want to be in a position where they're like, ah, you know, they confiscated a vape pen from a student or, or a teacher told a kid three times to do something and they didn't. Because if we don't go and God forbid something happens now, it's so that's, that's our
They're really calling about
Can you put a car over there with a dummy policeman?
This week, we were there for a vape pen.
For what?
Vape, a vape pen.
Gotcha. Put a Callan police car out there with a dummy in it.
And I know. You had six calls just on the first day of school.
Second day, it was four, ten and one, or six and one, eleven.
And Don? I think it's important to recognize when, when, when anyone calls the county police department, they do show up. Yeah. And do so professionally with a focus on public safety always. And I, we have had several discussions with the IU, many discussions internally about this issue. And it is reassuring that at the end of the day, boils down to public safety, community safety, both in the school, of course, and then out in the community. And throughout these conversations, that has been the driving point is we want the community to be safe. We want the students that are coming into, no matter where they're coming from, coming into the township to be safe. And I, it's been very important that we've all focused in on that and are trying to find a resolution that keeps that as a priority in mind and in, in spirit. So that's been, and the department has been dealing with this for a long period of time and has been doing so marvelously. Um, it has reached a point where we have had to engage them on a more frequent basis and elevate discussions to higher levels within the IU. Um, that's continuing and then we're hopeful that the outcome of this report and future conversations will lead to, um, a resolution. In the meantime, it's just reassuring of the department as professional staff and the officers are, are dealing with this, but it is a lot.
I'm really sorry, you know, this weight is put on.
Yeah, well, I mean, that, it, it, the several meetings that we had recently with, with, with their folks, I mean, they're, they've never complied. My, my people go down there and they handle the incident and we have a great, we have a great working relationship with, with the administrators and their staff. Like I've, I've never gotten a complaint from anyone down there saying, oh, you know, your people show up and they're like, oh, we're here again. I mean, they go, they, they do what they're, they're trained to do, uh, they do it professionally. And we move on, but at some point, we've got to, we've got to figure something out because it, it's just, it's out of, it's out of control.
I did read an article, you have a new, uh, principal and vice principal. I, I think the principal has been at that school for several years. So I don't know if you, have you had conversations with these folks?
I personally have not had the opportunity to meet the, the leadership, the new leadership.
Yes.
Um, tend to do so shortly. Um, have had discussions with more of the administrators along, uh, boot road. Uh, so I know they're, they're taking it, they're, they're aware of the situation.
Ray and I both have met. So the, the principal at the CDC is there a year. He's relatively new and the principal at the Learning Center is new this year, but she's been there in another capacity. We met her during a tabletop exercise a couple of months back. And again, great people to work with, you know, we, we have, we have no issues working with these people. It's just that the calls are.
It's a strain, a strain on us.
Just a question, if you had one school resource officer, is that enough? Would you need multiple?
The environment, we're not talking about a traditional, traditional school environment.
Like if you, if you had one, would you have to still call for service anyway?
So one of their staff members applied for one of our police jobs last year and he's been there a long time.
Yeah.
And they have several male teachers who he told me handle a lot of calls without calling us. He said, if we had to call you for everything, he said, your numbers would double or triple. So I think that potentially if we put a school resource officer in there, I think you would actually see our calls go up. At least temporarily, and we have almost as many calls at the Learning Center as we do at the CDC. And then there's an options plus building where they have, is that thirty of the worst? It, it would. The, the short answer, could we do it with one? No. Again, use of force, internal affairs, like this, this guy, this staff member who applied says he's involved in a use of force incident every day with a student, every day. And they have different, they play by a different set of rules than we.
Well, I'm going to assume this will be a continuing conversation we'll have, but, uh, Don, Chief, just keep us up to date.
Of course, we shall.
Okay, so the residents here understand.
Thank you for fighting the good fight.
Thank you. Don, who do we have next?
Okay.
Your happy new year here.
Going to do a quick pivot here from a difficult conversation to a much more positive one. We are at that point after we're reaching out to the public, several public meetings, discussions internal at the board meetings, ready to order the holiday street light decorations. Social media has spoken and have selected a, uh, particular holiday, uh, street display. I want to thank Abby for all the hard work and, and managing that whole.
Thank you, Abby.
Yes.
But we do have an opportunity if we, we receive, receive approval this evening, uh, to order. If we order by the end of the month, we'll receive a twenty percent discount on the holiday lights. Uh, nineteen in total, uh, individual cost at five hundred fifty-five dollars apiece. Uh, they will be shipped. So the total cost for the holiday ornaments is one thousand one hundred fourteen and eighty-five cents.
For the shipping?
For, for, um, excuse me, yes, eleven thousand, six hundred fifty-nine and eighty-five cents. I written the wrong thing. Thank you, Commissioner Young.
Yeah.
If they were a thousand bucks, we'd negotiate.
Nineteen?
Yeah, yeah.
Put them in everybody's office for a thousand bucks. So I, I assume with shipping costs of eleven hundred dollars, Santa himself will be bringing them here to
We're working on that, yes.
Nine hundred. That's a lot.
They are heavy duty. We had to come in to demonstrate. So they, they are expected to have about a twenty-year lifespan, um, as long as they're stored well and maintained. Uh, except bulbs might burn out, but if one bulb burns out, we did ask, the other ones will remain on.
Right.
And they have a, how long of a warranty? We know?
Was it one year? The one or three? I think it was, I believe it was a three-year warranty, but I'll
Candy canes.
Snowflakes.
They are, the snowflakes, yes.
Snowflake, snowflakes.
Snowflake. Many felt that they would be able to remain up a little bit longer and then some of the other holiday decorations that were played.
All right. I missed that meeting.
Well, we went with, with the public.
Public, yeah, that's, that's true. And, and I was, I was following that and there were so many folks that just loved the snowflake. Candy canes, no Candy canes, no wreaths. Oh. Can I have pictures? And we'll say Josh called it. Josh is, at our meeting, the first time we spoke about this, Josh says, I want the snowflakes.
I think, it's, it is, they're the most non. I think, I think it's the right choice.
Yeah, it's, it's neutral, yeah. They can go up right around Thanksgiving.
Holiday season.
It's all right to take them down, uh, Memorial Day?
I was thinking.
You know.
We'll just hang a flag from his.
Hang them up Labor Day and leave them up till Memorial.
Summer, yeah, snowflakes can last.
Take them down for opening day, least plus.
Yeah.
Might melt. More, yeah, that's true. We have to, we have to.
Oh, we're, we're waiting for Abby. Abby's gonna.
They look very presidential.
Mm-hmm.
We selected the four foot, right, they would fit in between the poles existing for the banners. Uh, so it would require less maintenance, um, and based on the size of the poles, they recommended the four foot.
Excellent.
Uh, Abby is shaking her head no.
What? This is not yet a garland.
Not yet. We can always add it later.
Yeah.
We're just getting started. Is this the one?
Yes, without the garland.
Okay. Without the garland.
And we'll, and we'll also be able to, we'll also be able to have the, uh, lights, uh, retrofitted with the, uh, the outlets.
Yes.
In time.
We are working on scheduling like that. It's, it, once we have that scheduled, it should be, I'm anticipating towards the end of September, take about a week or two. Put the swap out, put in the outlets in order to electrify and plug.
Are they there? Can they replace the four or five lights that are out too?
We also have to work on the timing elements to make sure everything's working and functioning properly, and that is part of that conversation, yes.
We've been, uh, thinking about this idea for four years, so who knew government worked so quick?
Four years, yeah.
I'm looking forward to it, really am. All right, uh, commissioners, any comments, questions on this?
No.
Just excitement. Anybody here in the township building? Comments, questions? They're all jumping up and down. Anybody in Zoom?
No.
Nothing? Abby? All right.
We'll get more compliments when the light's on.
Still looking.
They have to see it to appreciate it.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion to authorize a purchase, some of nineteen, yeah, snowflakes. Did you get all that, Denise? They're all excited. Everybody just motioned in second.
Yes.
We'll go with Commissioner Evans and second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, five zero. Tony, you look so excited. All right, Mr. Beemazall, what do we got next?
You commissioners. Unfortunately, following the, the recent weather event, it was reported that the roof at the Ingleside Golf Club Pro Shop, uh, was experiencing a leak. It was actually coming down into, uh, the, the office area and causing quite, quite issues. Uh, this would be a, reached out to some roofing contractors. Um, the low bit, that low quote that came back was Octarara Roofing and Exteriors for seventeen thousand four hundred. This would be replacing the entire roof. Um, it's, a number of shingles have come off, some of the guns are, are, are not functioning properly. Uh, so this would be an improvement that would, uh, stop it from any further damage to the interior of the, of the Pro Shop.
Commissioners, any questions, comments on this?
Yeah, a question. So our insurance doesn't cover any, like, roof replacement calls, uh, anything for this type of damage?
Not sure how long ago the roof of that, it's been quite some time for that roof. Now, there was a roof installed on the garage, I believe in twenty fifteen. Uh, but that roof is, is fairly, fairly dated. Uh, that is a good question, right? Not. We can check on that if we need to. Yeah, it's a good idea.
I mean, visibly you do not see a hole in the roof, so it must be leaking.
It's mostly age.
Yeah, exactly. Age of it.
Want to touch that, but it's still worth asking.
Yes.
Sure.
Commissioners, any other comments?
Yeah.
Residents here in the township building? None at this time? In Zoom? Oh, Tony?
The year of the roof.
Yeah, the year.
Tony's got a question. Is this about the roof? Oh, keep going. Come on up to the mic.
One.
Tony Desario, two fifty-one Loomis Avenue.
What, what was the comment? I, I didn't even hear.
Off course, picks up tab for the roof.
Go fun.
Or the fun, the fun.
Yeah. Got fun.
That's all.
Yes, all right. Thank you, Tony. Anyone in Zoom? None at this time? Abby? Entertain a motion to, uh, so moved, sign a contract with Octarara Roofing for seventeen thousand four hundred, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by.
They're not gonna check on insurance before we vote on it?
We would run through and check with insurance to see if they would help cover some of the costs. Sure, yeah, of course, yeah.
Also, keep in mind the, what could happen, you know, when we check with insurance, we should also take in consideration of how it would affect our uh, rates moving forward, so.
We will certainly reach out and, and before signing any.
Probably can just say contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
Insurance adjusted.
Okay. We had a second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Nicole will be happy because it was her office, it was leaking.
You're next, guys. Yeah.
Now, handicap.
It's a flat roof, it always needs replaced.
Okay, handicap parking.
All right, next on the agenda, board minutes to approve for the August eighth. Commissioners, any comments, changes? I'm sorry, where did I miss?
It's not on our agenda up here.
I do not have a two-point.
What, handicap parking? That's the next one.
It's on, it's on the paper copy from the packet, but not on the top left.
Handicap parking spot.
We will be, measures due to the confusion associated with the agenda, we'll, if it's okay, uh, like table down, this is related to a handicap parking. But that has been approved, it's just not been codified in an ordinance, this is an administrative function, but in the interest of any confusion, if it's acceptable as a table, until the next meeting, we'll make sure it's.
The, the information was in our packet.
Right.
And we've read it.
Was it?
But, but was it actually posted on the?
It's not one.
It, was it posted on the website as well?
It was on the website.
For handicaps.
Okay.
Okay.
Then we can move on. I think we're good.
Yeah, I, I think.
As long as it was posted, we can.
Yes, it was posted.
Excellent. Okay, yeah, it was just, I, I know we, we have the motion, uh, pages.
Right.
Put on our desk here, but it was in the original, yeah, I remember reading.
What, the next one?
For the handicap.
Yeah, the next one was for the handicap parkings.
But they took it off.
Right, they took it off.
Doesn't have an ordinance number on this, though, but, all right.
This would be related to, is a handicap parking spot approved at fifteen nineteen Walnut Street. Um, sometime ago, this was in August, they, excuse me, um, sometime last year. And it was approved, um, sign is up, but until it's codified into it as an ordinance, um, if there's a citation issue, that, that could be questionable. So we've got to just, from an administrative standpoint, of course, to get it on the books.
And we, we have an ordinance for, uh, special purpose parking zones. This is just adding this address?
Correct.
To that list. All right, and do I have a, an ordinance number?
What?
Oh, we're just advertising, I apologize. Okay, well, uh, questions from commissioners? None at this time, questions from residents? None here in the township building, Zoom? Entertain a motion to advertise.
Some of second.
Second.
Even I'm getting confused.
I said, who did what?
Yeah, who did?
She did one, second. And then Mark.
Denise, Denise, this is your call. Okay, this, yeah, this is your call. Thank you. Uh, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Yeah, everybody kinda shouted it.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine with me. All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Uh, next is the board minutes to approve for August eighth. Fortunately, I was not able to make that meeting. Commissioners, any questions, changes? Nope. Uh, Don, did you just, I did talk to you earlier today about, uh, a couple of.
We will make those changes, yes.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve minutes. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? And aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstains. Passes, uh, minutes passed, four with one abstain. Easy enough, uh, right along Finance Department.
Finance.
So, welcome.
There we go. Thanks, everybody.
Like a hot potato over there, who gets the mic, right?
Yeah. All right, starting off, um, the audits are still underway. We had an unannounced pension audit uh, that kinda stalled the township's general audit again. Uh, we have an exit interview for this audit next week, so the pensions at that point should push the general audit into the final phase. I just did get a text message from, uh, Maylie, um, and next week it should be finalized and presented, uh, hopefully we can get it on the schedule for the following board meeting. Uh, our fund balance, I love talking about this, is still going strong, um, and very healthy going into the third quarter. And investments are also going strong. I expect that to finish in stellar results again and should carry over into twenty twenty-five in several of the funds, um, some of those bigger funds we've depleted doing, you know, our projects. Uh, Finance Committee met about two weeks ago, uh, to review a strong mid-year actual, and we should be meeting in about two or three weeks. Have those dates being sent out, uh, to start critiquing the twenty twenty-five budget, which should be a pretty exciting meeting. Pencils are ready. How to go on. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Lisa, uh, commissioners, any comments, questions?
Just that the Finance Committee uses.
It's black ink instead of, uh.
Uh, next is the check run, fifty-two thousand five hundred forty-seven to fifty-two thousand six hundred fifty-one. And a manual check of three oh six. Commissioners, any comments on that?
So moved.
Moved? Have a second.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Tindaro, second by Commissioner Evans. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero, run has been approved.
Thank you.
All right, meat and potatoes time. Ooh, we changed it up a bit. Building life and safety.
Changing it every month.
Like this.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, just a couple of highlights off of, uh, my report. Uh, all three of our residential projects are, are going strong. Uh, Hillview, the Hillview project, uh, continued to work towards closeout. They still have a, a long way to go, but they're working on it. My place, um, continues to, uh, rent out apartments in townhomes, and they're starting, uh, one of the next phases for earth disturbance. Uh, Willow's Valley Run, actually, all buildings, all the, uh, six buildings in there have UNOs and all of them have tenants, so they're, that's a pretty active.
Six?
All six.
All six, wow. I didn't know they were all built.
So they're not all filled yet, but they're close. They have a waitlist, so as they get UNOs, they start moving people.
Then they move them in. Okay, thank you.
Uh, multiple commercial projects, uh, as you've seen around the township. I believe, uh, one of the commissioners was just at a ground, not a groundbreaking, but like an open house uh, on Zen Road, thirty twenty-five Zen Road for the daycare.
Still, yes.
Yep.
Celebrates.
Celebrate School.
Yes.
We just issued those, uh, permits for renovation, actually, today.
They'll be ready to start, I think, in January.
Land development, two new ones, this really should be on next month's report, but, uh, forty sixty Edges Mill Road, the Flex Building, all fill, uh, their Reece Middle, it's been quiet for quite a while. Their Reece Middle came in, we just processed that and dispersed it, uh, including to the Historic Commission. And Kia, Kia, uh, their plan just came in today. Uh, it's in the back room, the engineer still has to look at it, then it'll be for you guys to sign for recording. And we are gonna issue a, a grading permit, a limited grading permit, so they at least can get the project started while they're, uh, recording their plans. Uh, from an emergency service standpoint, uh, from the fireside, on September eleventh, we have a Civil Service, uh, Commission meeting scheduled. Uh, we do have a list, uh, for them to certify, and my hope is to be on the September twelfth board agenda with a potential recommendation for hiring. Uh, EMS, we've been meeting with Mingwist on a regular basis, uh, we're working through a draft budget to get to the Budget Committee. Hopefully that'll be coming soon, and that's the highlights.
Ray, appreciate it. Immunity enhancement.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Abby.
Um, so more updates on social media, outreach numbers, things like that. Um, obviously, the, the big thing lurking on the horizon is Community Day next weekend. Um, I'm still in need of volunteers, so if anyone knows anyone or finds a stranger on the street that would make a good volunteer, please send them to me. Um, cause we have, we keep adding things, and the volunteer force has not kept up with the additions uh, of, of fun activities, so I'm so, that's, that's the one outstanding thing. Um, but everything else is in good shape.
You have five volunteers right up here. Let us know what you need.
Thank you. I'll do that. Yeah. Um, and then
I'll be right behind Mark the entire time.
Unless anyone has any questions about my report, I just wanna show you something cool that I found um, that I did mention in there, and this is a, along the sustainability lines, the um, the county put this website together. I'm gonna share it right here, and it's a municipal sustainable practices inventory. And you might recognize, maybe you don't, but you might recognize the photo on the, on the homepage there. Um.
Beautiful.
It is beautiful. But what's really cool about this is that it's broken down and it's a series of maps, so you can click on these tabs along the top and it's different focus areas, so under planning and zoning, this will be sustainable, specific planning and zoning practices, and then when you go through the different actions, it will highlight which municipalities in the county. the different actions, it will highlight which municipalities in the county are doing those things or have done those things. Um, and we certainly haven't done all of them, but we're on here a lot. Um, so I just wanted to highlight, um, this website to, for you guys and for the residents as well. And we did have the Sustainable PA certification. It's just kind of fun to go through. And then, um, I believe some of them, you can click on it and it'll have a website that takes you to, to whatever that that thing is. So it's been really helpful in our sustainability conversations to talk to the other municipalities that are are ahead of us on some of these issues and see the different ways they're approaching different things. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Yeah. I love the Art in the Park thing. And I love your reports. These are great. I'm wondering, is there, is there a way we could, uh, do a rotating in here? Of the collection? I, I know it's at the, um, Coatsville Library. But I mean, it would be really cool to give them a little more life in, in our building.
Yeah, I don't see why not. Um, I will say they, they've been collected from the Coatsville Library at this point because they're going to be displayed at Community Day.
Excellent.
So part of Liz's point, um, purpose for doing the Art in the Park program was to generate more entries for the art show for Community Day. And it's worked out great. So we will have all of those pieces displayed along the fence there near our tables at Community Day, um, as well as the people that have entered specifically for the art show. But after that, she, I'm sure she would love to.
Will any of them be up for bid?
File an auction.
I'm sure that can be arranged. We haven't gotten that far. It's our first year.
Are you doing like one winner or is there like categories of winners?
So we did winners, um, by ages. So there would be an adult winner, a high school winner, a middle school winner. And then we were going to do a smaller prize for the Art in the Park participants.
What, I mean, why don't we take the winners, if they're willing, and put the winners' art in this building somehow? I mean, the back wall there is pretty blank.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. As when they're willing to part with their pieces, that would be wonderful.
And maybe we just do it as a rotation. Yeah, we, we ask to post them for three months or whatever. You know, or however long they want to leave them with us.
Yeah, absolutely. Good stuff. Thanks.
And Abby, we have also the, uh, the Callan Native Meadow Seeding Day coming up?
Yes, so there are a few other events. Um, I think we have another meeting before then, but we're going to seed the second acre of meadow, uh, in October.
October.
The twelfth? Well, twelfth. Um, and that day is also a cleanup, uh, as well. And we do have, our first cleanup for the fall is coming up on September fourteenth. It's the Saturday after Community Day.
I think it's the twelfth.
It might be the twelfth as well. Anyway, um, so we could use a few more volunteers for that. And definitely for the meadow seeding. That's a fun one. It's real quick, it's easy, and it's just kind of a big group effort. And then two years later, you get to see the results of what you did. So, yeah, lots of fun stuff.
County is the place to be. That website?
Yeah.
Next.
Thank you, Abby.
Ingleside.
Hey, we have Ingleside Golf Course. We have Nicole online.
Unfortunately, she had to, uh, had to drop off the, the meeting tonight. Um, she indicated that the report is included in the package and the major issue was, of course, the roof. So she's grateful that you will not be dripped on during the main fence.
She's happy about that. Uh, Minkwist Fire Company. Matt, how you doing? Good.
Hi.
Good evening. For the month of July, uh, we had five hundred and five total dispatched calls. Hospital, two hundred sixty-three ALS dispatches, two hundred forty-two were BLS dispatches. For the month, a hundred seventy-seven calls. Thirty-five percent. Call line for the month. Busiest day of the week was Tuesday, followed by Monday and then Friday. Two hundred and five of those calls went to Cheshire County Hospital, five went to Bay Area. Average call times. Seven point nine minutes. One scene transport sixteen minutes. Transport hospitals, twenty point five minutes. Total call time of seventy-one. Top call types, ALS respiratory with twelve percent of our calls, ALS fall for twelve percent, ALS sick person, eleven percent. Heart problems for nine, ALS emotional disorder. Thirty-nine scheduled transports. Dispatches. Dispatched to. Eleven times, transport eleven times. Had one cardiac arrest last. That's, uh, all echo, race ed. From the municipalities. Um, and to be honest, we left that meeting. One last comment. August twentieth, county held an honorable but broken. Crystal Training Center, basically just, uh, outlines the. Not just here. Thank you guys for, for being up here and, uh, one thing, mess, mess up the social service. It's not too frequent. So yet, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You are part of this township, keeping our folks safe. Alright, next, Lee's chief. Hello again. All positive.
So officer milestones for the month of July, Corporal Jason Culbertson, twenty-four years, Corporal Drew Schiller, six. Investigator Chris Trainee, three, and Officer Michael Cabori, three. Um, I sent out an email last few days. Corporal Polig announced his retirement after twenty-five years, effective October first, but thanks to you, when we did the last round of hires, if you recall, we anticipated his pending retirement, which we thought would be next year. So we don't have to test again. You have an officer in the academy now who will graduate in December and fill his vacancy.
Great.
All the best to, to him.
If you haven't all heard, we received a very generous donation from the estate of Carolyn Cox in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Alright, wow.
Um, she recently passed away at the age of ninety-three. She was not a resident, but her son Barry, different last name than hers, served with the Callan Police Department from nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-four. He passed away in nineteen seventy-four. So we're talking fifty years ago. And Callan has still remained near and dear in this woman's heart. To put things in perspective, Josh, Barry Beach was hired to replace.
Oh, my goodness.
Her son. We've been in contact with the estate attorney. It's our understanding she doesn't have any, uh, living, remaining family members. But we're, we're trying to get ahold of someone so that we could extend our gratitude. I mean, that, that's
Sure.
It's an incredible amount.
Any restrictions on it or what, what is the purpose for? For the police department?
Restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we found an email from twenty twenty-two. Apparently, she stopped in. I, I wasn't here that day and she talked to Nate Miller. And she told him that her son had worked here. And she's like, well, I'd like to, I'd like to will you guys, uh, you know, some money, maybe to buy a police car or whatever. And at that point, we're thinking like, who knows? Two years later, two years later, we, we get, uh, we get a letter from, from the estate attorney. So that, that.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Pretty incredible.
Nice.
I failed to mention during last month's meeting that Pennsylvania finally joins twenty-six states, including all of our border states.
Yes.
Um, in the passage of Act eighteen of twenty twenty-four, it's known as the Paul Miller Junior Law, which went into effect on June fifth, and it limits the use of handheld cell phones or other communication devices while operating a motor vehicle in Pennsylvania.
Yay.
Hmm.
So.
Okay.
Um. First offense, fifty dollar fine. It goes up from there. Lot higher if it involves a fatality or occurs in a construction zone. The bill was actually named after Paul Miller, who died in twenty-ten. Uh, he was struck by a tractor trailer driver on Route thirty-three who was on his cellphone at the time. And he was tragically killed. So the mom has lobbied long and hard. Uh, and finally, fourteen years later, the law passed. So long, long overdue.
We'll get out of the Stone Age in Pennsylvania one of these.
Yes.
We're on our way.
I know you've mentioned it before, um, the fact that we didn't have a law, but now.
Now we do.
What's that? It is, but you know, the legislator, legislature wrote in like a year forgiveness. So for, during the first year.
Yeah.
It's written warnings and then after years, after years when the fine kicks in. But yeah, it's, it was, it was effective in June. Let's see, what else? All happy stuffing. So, um, you're, you're aware of our senior program, which has been around for a long time, where, you know, seniors call in, um, and then if we don't hear from them, we check on them.
Yes.
But we're, we're excited to announce that we're actually expanding that program based on the success we've had with the senior program. That will include residents with disabilities, shut-ins who live alone, and anyone in the township, uh, who needs to be checked on daily. Um, the new program will utilize the, uh, Are You Okay platform. Uh, the system is in place in about two hundred other cities and towns in the United States. Just real briefly. Um, it's a computerized telephone calling system that we recently acquired. And it will be operated by our department as a free service to our residents.
Hmm.
It provides a daily checkup on the subscriber and alerts us if they are unable to answer the phone. If the system can't reach the subscriber, a patrol officer will respond to check on the person. It's something that we've been working on for a while, but with technology, there's issues that you run into from time to time. So we hope to have it in place within the next couple of weeks. We talked about advertising it to make sure our residents are aware of it and there'll be a registration period and, and, and more information. People have questions. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions from.
Report. Just looking out for our, our folks. And Public Works. Johnny, welcome.
I'll get home.
Good evening.
Hey, Johnny.
Uh.
Hi.
This is short and sweet. Um, for the storms last month, um, we had, uh, six called out from police department with the flooding and all the stormy head trees and stuff coming down. Um, Municipal Park project is completed, um, seven hundred feet of water line installed.
Thank you.
Guys did it themselves.
Yeah.
So that was a, a very good thing. Preventive rentals, uh, over at the park, uh, fourteen preventive rentals for, you know, parties and graduations and stuff like that. So. Um, but that's pretty much what I have going on. And, uh, just task work all around the township, you know, trying to pass the potholes and water damage from, uh, the storms. Long, long working with that kind of stuff. And that's it for.
Thank you.
Works.
And I do have one question over by Brian Hoskins. How, how did that, uh, this drain system turn out?
Uh, Pico came out and covered their backup. And, uh, right now, I guess we are still in talk with Brian Hoskins, who's going to maintain that.
Okay.
So, but there, that gas line is covered back up like.
Okay. Technically, that belongs to Hoskins, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They came to us maybe a decade ago, asking us to take over and we said no at the time, I think.
Right, we did a little bit of work there.
Yeah.
Years ago digging out, but I never knew. I thought it was always ours and I never knew. So we always try to maintain that swell and everything going up the town here.
Yeah, we found out more about it than we really wanted to know.
Alright, oh, and I wanted to give you a shout out for doing a great job on the sign, the county township sign there at, uh, three forty and Joe Carlson. Really looks nice. Painted new wood.
Go Abby.
Abby, were, were you part of that as well? No? Ray wouldn't do it. You're good.
He's out there waxing it now.
Alright, next, uh, that's been at least, or now by a volunteer fire company, Pat, Patrick, welcome.
Good evening.
Hello.
Hi, Patrick.
Um, so just a couple of highlights from the report. So just like Director, uh, Director Huggins had mentioned, and I'm sure he's blocked my cellphone number by now, but uh, for the month of July, especially that July sixteenth, uh, when, uh, had a major thunderstorm kind of roll through, we were really busy. Um, happy to say we had two crews on station. Um, so we were able to cover the township, um, as well as parts of, uh, West Bradford, uh, and such, where they couldn't even get certain locations. Uh, so happy to report that we were able to take care of our own and help out, uh, uh, some aiding agencies as well. Most of our calls came in the days prior as power is getting restored and things like that. Uh, but I appreciate everything from, from county police to, uh, public works, uh, for, for their assistance and coordination. Trying to make streets safe. Um, other than that, uh, looking forward, we got a couple, uh, busy months coming up, obviously, starting next Saturday with County Community Day. Uh, we'll forward to seeing everybody there. And then looking ahead to October, our, uh, fire prevention open house be on, uh, I believe it's Saturday, October twelfth. So I hope to, hopefully better weather than we had last year where it's cold and rainy, but hoping, uh, see everybody. Have, uh, some stuff going on, including a, a live burn demo. If Ray allows.
I've always heard it's better to ask for forgiveness.
Is that recorded? I'll keep that in mind. No, um, other than that, that's all I had for this month. Um, so any questions? Oh, actually, one thing I did forget, uh, while not in this area, but to kind of go along, uh, with the law that, uh, with the distracted drivers. Um, back in July, there was, uh, at least one fire police officer killed out in York County uh, by a distracted driver. And I believe, I cannot remember where in the state of PA, but I believe a week and a half later, another officer was struck, uh, fire police officer. But I could not remember if they were killed or injured, but, I mean, we face it constantly. Whether it's side street, Lincoln Highway, Business Thirty. Uh, or, I'm sorry, uh, bypass. It, it's very dangerous. I want to go home to my family just as much as anybody else. So it, it's really important, um, for not only that law, but just everything else. It's amazing how many times we see it. Just daily driving, if not, out on. So hopefully, fingers crossed, we remain safe. I know, we take pride in, in some of the, the policies and things we have with that. And we're, we're trying the best we can to stay safe as a team. For not only state police, county police, tow truck operators and EMS. So that's all I had. I promise this time.
Alright, and Patrick, uh, I just want to thank, uh, a few of your crew members there. Leah, I, I believe it's Leah and Chris.
Yes.
Who helped me with my water rescue on August eighth. That's all I'm going to say about that, but. That's all I'm going to say about that, but.
Good thing is that, uh, number one, we're, we're trained, and number two, you're safe.
I think.
That's the key.
They were excellent. Yeah, they were. They, they helped me across, in fact, Leah helped me across the river, uh, the flowing river.
Yes.
Right there. So, uh, and we also had a, the, the police officer who originally came out. I, I apologize. I do not, I don't remember his name. Uh, but he was a huge help.
It's, uh. Regardless, I mean, we bought our first kind of water suits in twenty-eleven and three to five years, we were putting them on. Uh, now it's.
Everything.
A lot. Uh.
Yeah, she.
Storm, the storms are just becoming intense, um, in a very short period of time. So, um, we've dedicated a lot of our training in the year, we actually, most of our training in July was water rescue training.
Hmm.
Um, so to keep those skills sharp, it's actually becoming more prevalent than maybe fires, which is good.
Hmm.
That fires are down, but, uh, no matter what, uh, we gotta be ready for everything. As Chief Elias alluded to at the very beginning, if somebody dials number one, they don't care.
Yeah.
They just want somebody to show up to fix what their thing, what they think is the worst event of their life, no matter what anybody else says. Um, so we're happy to, happy to respond. Matter what.
And now he, he was, he was great. I don't think he realized who I was until halfway. So. Yeah, he does, he does now, but yeah, no, he was very gracious. It was, it was, uh, it was a difficult time for me as well. But, uh, the fire department made sure I had a life vest to wear.
I'm glad training pays off because that's it. I'm in there, you're constantly about it.
Yeah, she said, you need to wear this and we're going to get you across this little river here.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did a great job.
Thank you. Like I said, I'm glad you're safe.
I'm safe.
So am I.
Thank you.
Like.
Thank you.
Well.
Thanks, Patrick.
Yeah.
All right, uh, additional business. Have any of this time?
Anything?
Looks like none.
No.
Public comments. Tony, oh, oh, wait a minute. Dawn?
Dawn.
Come on up, Dawn.
Dawn and Kathy.
I'm just here in response to something we got regarding Allville and forty-sixteen in the Snow Road this week.
And can you lean the mic down a little bit just in case? I'm sorry. Or, or even hold it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I can hold it for you.
There you go.
My karaoke.
Use yourself too.
Um, I know y'all want to go home, so I'm going to be very quick.
Give them all the time in the world.
I just want to address a couple of things that were in, in this submission. Um, and I know that this was already approved a long time ago before y'all were here, but there are areas of concern in here, and I just want that, my, my comments and Kathy's to go on the record. Um, there is, um, the allow, a variance for, um, building into the riparian buffer on Beaver Creek there, um, that's been approved. Um, and there's also a couple of outstanding questions, specifically on the type of soil compaction. Um, I don't think we heard back. We had a, a concern that, um, the deep dynamic compaction that they recommended for that soil would not be effective in that it would, um, also possibly have a potential, um, effect on the three hundred year old homes, uh, specifically the blacksmith shop, the Jennings home and our home. Um, and I think they were asked to consider another kind of compaction, and I'm not aware that that was resolved.
I believe in this, just from our meetings with them, and I'll let Ray, I believe they did agree.
It was resolved.
That they would not use.
The deep.
Ray, am I right about that?
We had that conversation, and I do know for sure, I can say that they said they would look into, uh, other alternatives.
Yeah.
I have to, yeah, I have to wait and look. I have not reviewed the packet, but I do remember that conversation specifically, so.
Yeah, I would like to know the results of that.
Yeah.
So that we.
I apologize. I have not looked at the new packet yet.
I haven't, I haven't seen it. Thank you. All right. So we'll fi, we'll follow up on that. Um, and then the, the, there were two things that the Historic Commission had requested, but I didn't see that either. Um, one was the stone facade to blend in with the historic area there. Um, I think they agreed to that, and we did see a drawing of that, but I just didn't know if that was part of this being signed off on, that it was accepted and it would be happening. So.
And I haven't looked at the packet, but just so you know, I mean, it's still, it'll go to the Planning Commission first, then it'll go to the board. So there'll be multiple, you know, multiple reviews of it.
Okay.
Um, and I do, you're absolutely right. I mean, they agreed to that. I don't, I don't think that's even a question.
Terrific. And then the second question was on the buffer. We had asked them to plant an evergreen buffer along the road so that their lighting would not impact the neighbors, the road itself.
As far as I know, I do remember that as well. Again, I, we just processed it, so I haven't really did the review.
All right.
But your recollection is right, and I believe there was no concerns about that. So they have preliminary approval, enduring preliminary approval, I believe they, those two things specifically, they absolutely agreed.
Okay, great. So you'll post when these, when this is going to, through the other?
So, yeah, they'll, you'll see it on the agenda for the Planning Commission, which most likely will be next month.
Okay.
And then if it gets approval, you'll see it, uh, on the agenda for the board when it comes in front of the board, uh, which could be October, it could be November.
All right, great. Thank you. So you have no idea at this point in time when the construction's going to begin?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right, good.
It's on the final land development.
Yeah, that's, and that's what their submittal was. So, you know, you could be, just to get those approvals, you could be the end of the year, beginning of next year, and then who knows when they would start constructing.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ray. And then for Abby's identification, there is a fall wildflower bloom in a field on Edges Mill Road. And there are native species there. So Abby, you need to come take a look. We've got dog bing, we've got goldenrod, and we've got tezel, at least. Maybe you'll find some more. So that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
While Kathy's up here, I, I want to put her on the spot and point out that Kathy single-handedly pushed through to get her beautiful historic home, uh, considered eligible for National Register, and she had people from the National Register out last week, I believe, and they informed her that the whole milling district there is also under consideration. So.
Bravo.
All right, any other public comment? Tony, yes, come on up.
Tony.
They're just area.
Sorry, you're two-five-one Loomis Avenue. I hear about the flooding. Got nailed over there pretty good, or got flooded?
Yeah, my car wanted to stop in front of the, uh, golf course. For some reason.
I mean.
Yeah.
You know, it's got to stop. You know, it's not safe. I heard you at the meeting that night talking about safety. You know, even my neighbor, they come down Seltzer Avenue, he got a high traffic under. He said he just made it through this with bad on both streets. So there's no outlet. Boulevard's flooded. Loomis Avenue flooded. Nobody's doing nothing. I get the debris out of the streams, not the other thing, a lot of the, the silt coming down from the hill. Went into the stream, they have that brandy wine. First thing you have, a lot of that mud is going down into the brandy wine, so.
I wouldn't say nobody's doing anything. There's a lot of things happening behind the scenes. Uh, uh, and on a daily basis. So I wouldn't say nothing is happening. We have the, uh, stormwater report we're waiting on, um, that'll prioritize for us, just like the road program. Um, so we're waiting on that to be finished from our engineer.
Fresh storm drains, right?
Right. But, and it's not just storm drains, it's all the stormwater infrastructure. Um, so it's, it's everything. Um, so I wouldn't say nothing's happened. That's, that's not a fair statement, but, um.
Going just a little too long.
Well, it, we, same thing with the road program, you know, it took years for us to, to ramp that up, and now look at, we, um, we have our roads, uh, every year where we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on roads to make sure that they're, uh, up to par. We intend to do the same thing with stormwater.
One other question. On Lloyd Avenue, that, where the building was new home over in there, is that a red district, that area to Danny Towns School District?
New homes?
What new homes? Right on three, three twenty Lloyd Avenue. Talking about my place, the apartments in town. No, no.
There's.
Down across from. Royal Farms.
There's no new homes going in there that I know of.
Yeah, there's no new homestead.
Yeah.
That big pile of dirt?
Oh, that was from the, that was from the, uh, Aqua Waterline Project, and they leased land from the Harry Miller who owns Lloyd Farm, and they asked if they could keep the dirt that was leftovers. Am I right about that? Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that, that's all the spoils from the water line.
Yeah.
Project.
About my homes, that, them.
My place?
My place?
No.
No.
Coats or school.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tony.
Tony, I, 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 my heart breaks with, with you and everyone else with the flooding. I, I can't speak for previous boards here and the state of affairs ten years ago, but I don't think anyone at this level at the time was really. Cause I don't think anyone had an idea of how massive the effect of climate change was going to be really quickly. And what I see has happened in the last five to six years just blows my mind. What used to be just a little rain, and now everything's flooded. I mean, it's.
Like this. Of nineteen.
Everything floods. But where I, like where I am, it, it wasn't. And I can tell you that that Lloyd Avenue Bridge is going underwater all the time now. It's, I mean, you need to be dressed, but, you know, it's, this is only going to get worse, so.
They got flooded bad.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Got bad. But, all right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Yeah, and, and the rains from August eighth, uh, what do, what do we have? About six inches of, of rain?
Yeah.
Yeah, within a period of what, two, two hours?
Very scary.
But it also receded within, uh, an hour or two.
It, it did. It was, it was very fast. There were flash flooding, like, I believe that's what it seems to appear to be. But, uh, the work, it was clear, the work that has been done, um, is allowed for it to recede very quickly.
Hmm. Yeah, because our neighborhood, you know, Tony and I live in the same neighborhood. We only have two entrances to get to our, our homes, uh, but it went, when it rains that hard, we're flooded out. So we, we're either stuck in our town, in, in our development or we're stuck out of it. But within that hour, it had receded to the point where we could drive through, because even the officer who gave me the lift home was able to get across, uh, Seltzer at that point. And there was two cars waiting for the water to recede at that point. So, but yeah, I, I know the township needs some work. We're, we're diligently going at it, packing it, uh, the best way we, excuse me, best way possible, but we'll, we'll take care of it, Tony. So. Public comments, no other?
So moved.
Wait a minute, anybody in Zoom? All right, uh, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move, move to the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Have a great night. Have a great holiday weekend, everyone.
Thank you.